Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2017. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our council work session, and we're going to start with A&amp;F Administration and Finance, Mrs. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a big evening tonight, obviously. This has been a work in process. The issues at hand are brought to us by a number of residents, and we wanted to involve the contractors in not only what our existing ordinances are and the enforcement of them, but the new ones that we're hoping to put in place that will be fair and equitable to everyone and try to make everyone happy, which I know we can't always do. So at this time, I would like to turn that portion of it over to our administrator, Jill Gouger.
Thank you. Before we start that, I just wanted to see if I could have the collector and the assessor give their short report, so then that gives us time to go into more detail of our discussion, if that's okay?
No.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Hi. The direct debit program has been very successful. We have between tax accounts and utilities accounts probably 500 sign-ups. I just did the pre-note, so if you signed up for taxes, you should have received an email from me by now. Everything went fairly smoothly, just a few bumps, nothing major, and we're ready to go for November 1st withdrawals on your taxes. Okay? Good. Friday was my 20-year anniversary with the borough.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Seems like only yesterday. And as you know, I sent you a memo on our last tax sale where nobody showed up, and we now have one municipal lien, which I will be deferring to Mr. Caravan's expertise on that. We can start foreclosure proceedings in six months. And this year at the lien, one of the lectures is on interim foreclosure, so that works out really well for me and for you, Marcus. Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
That's my short report. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Good afternoon. Happy October. No more parking meters. I have two things to report on, the revow ongoing. The interior inspections are still going on. There've been about 850 completed. They're still out there for the next, like, three weeks until the end of October. We have about 2,700 Class II residential properties in the borough, and they're required to get into one-third, so that would be about 900, so they're almost there. Hopefully, they'll get into more than that, but the Class II, I'm sorry, Class IV land values are being established now, and the Class I and II properties have their land values have been established. So my better news is added assessments. This year, we had $36,858,800 in added assessments. That's the biggest I've ever seen since I've been here, and I was here since 2003 for the major boom, and then I was here for the bubble being burst. And so it just goes to show that the market is improving, and we're catching up to where we were in 2006, not everywhere. Usually, in a revow, a third of the values go down, a third stay the same, and a third go up. So that's usually the way it works. Do you have any questions for me?
Nope. Anybody?
Okay. Have a great day.
Thank you, Margaret.
Completion date?
Oh, I think it's November 15th.
So they got a lot of work to do in between now and November 15th?
Well, the commercial values, yeah. There is a lot of work to be done, but they have some outside help, helping them, you know, a couple of people that are assessors in other areas that take on additional work. So I think they have it under control. And like I've said before, if we need an extension, I don't think the county will see a problem with that.
Okay.
But it should all be on the books for January 10. I don't see an issue with that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thanks, Margaret.
Thank you.
Okay. I think Margaret's report was a perfect segue into this discussion. Clearly, the amount of new ratables speaks for the amount of construction that's going on. Currently, we have over 30 active construction sites in town, which is a good thing. However, it also brings concerns from the residents, and that's pretty much brought us to today to try to deal with some of their concerns, and we've invited the contractors. I want to thank everyone for coming to help participate in this conversation. We just wanted to highlight the existing ordinances and pretty much asking the contractors' cooperation to review these and to help the borough with, you know, daily, you know, enforcing these ordinances on their sites. Our construction office and the police department, I had the conversations with them back in September, and they have been trying to be as proactive as possible on this. However, because of that, that will delay their normal inspection time, so then that delays when, you know, the projects can move forward with final inspections and the completion of the project. So it's kind of a catch-22 there. But I'd like to kind of go over the existing ordinances, and then I'll go over the proposals for some possible changes, and then I think would be appropriate at that time to open it up for some discussion. Okay? Okay. Ordinance 178-24, their permit fee is required. The permit must prominently be displayed at the work site. The construction office and the chief of police have to approve the position of your dumpster or construction trailer if not located on the property. Ordinance 178-25, they must comply with all solid waste and recycling ordinances. Ordinance 178-27, adequate and safe access along all sidewalks must be maintained at all times for use by the public. If the sidewalk is to be replaced, it must remain until ready to be replaced, and when the construction office approves the replacement of the sidewalk, it must be completed within five days. This is one that I have had several complaints that this is not occurring. Ordinance 178-28, warning signs must be posted when the sidewalk is being replaced. Ordinance 178-1, waste material and rubbish shall not be stored or allowed to accumulate within the building or the immediate vicinity. Combustible waste and rubbish shall be removed at least daily. 178-20, all dumpsters must be covered between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. If the dumpster is placed on the street, the surface must be protected. Dumpsters must be emptied periodically to prevent overflow. This is another one that Public Works has a lot of concerns for, where there isn't something proper underneath to protect our street. 178-21, portable toilets must be located at least 15 feet back from the curb line. It must be located on the construction property and located in such a way as to minimize any effect on any neighboring or adjoining properties. Portable toilets must be serviced regularly. 178-22, semi-trailers, including those used for storage purposes, must be parked on the construction site. Under no circumstances may any semi-trailer be parked on the public streets or public thoroughfares at any time beginning Memorial Day weekend through and including September 15th of each year. 178-23, construction trailers containing tools, materials, or supplies for contractors, landscapers, and craftsmen shall be parked immediately in front of or on the construction sites, but only during the period of actual construction and only during the period of time when the particular contractor or craftsman utilizing the trailer is actually engaged in working on the project. All such trailers must be removed from the site immediately following the completion of that project or that particular portion of the project. On the avenues of the borough, no construction trailer shall be parked within 50 feet of the intersection. Again, that's one that the police have recently been enforcing. 178-11, between June 25th and September 10th of each year, no person, firm, or association of persons shall erect, including excavation, alter, or demolish any structure in the business and light industry zones of this borough in such a manner as to cause interference, stoppage, or rerouting of vehicular or pedestrian traffic along any of the rights of way. And then finally, 374-A7, construction or repairing of buildings, erection including excavation, demolition, alteration, or repair of any building other than between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., except in case of urgent necessity in the interest of public health and safety, and then only with a permit from the construction official, which permit may be granted for a period not to exceed three days while the emergency continues, and which permit may be renewed for a period of three days or less while the emergency continues. Okay? And so these are all existing on the books now. Now, for our discussion, some suggested ordinance changes. The first one, no demolition during the period July 1st until the Friday immediately following Labor Day. Number two, no work on any site prior to 8:00 a.m. or after 6:00 p.m., no heavy equipment prior to 9:00 a.m. Number three, no work at all on Sundays beginning July 1st through the Friday immediately following Labor Day. No work at all on Memorial Day weekend, no work at all on the Friday after Thanksgiving, and no work at all on July 4th. And finally, number four, only interior work is allowed on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., July 1st until the Friday after Labor Day and Memorial Day weekend. Now, the clerk does have in her possession some emails from several residents who were unable to come. I don't know if you want to read them into the record now, or you want to open up for discussion, or at some point I think...
What's your pleasure as the Chair of A&amp;F?
I think what we will do, we don't know how many people are going to get up to speak, and because of the time allotment, know that there are concerns from the residents, and they will be read into the record following the discussion by those in attendance.
Okay.
So we'll see what kind of time we have at the end. And just so everyone in the audience knows how we ended up where we are today, is this discussion started in the A&amp;F Committee a couple of months ago. Then they brought the idea of some changes to full council one month ago, and this was all in response to some feedback that we were getting from residents concerning construction in town. So after these changes were brought to full council one month ago, more discussion ensued, and we decided we would like to hear from those involved in the construction trade to just help us continue to do our due diligence and make a decision what to do moving forward. So that's how we ended up where we are today. So what I'm going to ask you to do is, when you come up to the podium, we want to hear from you, and when you come up to the podium, your name, your address, and whatever construction firm you're associated with. And also, there's a sign-in sheet floating around out there somewhere. If you can make sure to put your name there and an email address that we can understand would help, and then we can continue to communicate if we need to moving forward. So who would like to go first?
Yes. My name is Dale Andrews, and I represent Riverview Plumbing. We do work up and down the entire east coast, east of the Parkway, and we're just not dealing with just Stone Harbor. We're dealing with all the boroughs. It seems to be that all the boroughs have one thing in common, and that is appeasing the residents and the tourists that come down who take care of our city here, who fund our city. Pretty much all municipalities up and down the coast here pretty much say the same thing. They want job trailers, storage trailers, call them what you want. They want them parked immediately in front of the buildings. Neighbors, residents are complaining there's lack of parking on July 4th to Labor Day. I understand all that, but somehow or another, we need the jockey, the balance here. Contractors need to work. They need to make a living. We're doing nothing wrong. We're just trying to make a living. So therefore, we try to park any vehicles, trailers, we try to park them onsite, but a lot of these sites are just small, little postage-stamp-sized lots. It's hard, especially when you put a dumpster in front of the lot. It's kind of hard, but we do the best we can. Most neighbors are willing to work with you. Some just don't. So I need you to take in consideration that you guys sitting up here don't work seven months out of the year, eight months out of the year. You work 12 months out of the year. Your paychecks are driven on 12 months out of the year. And putting these restrictions on general contractors, subcontractors, is a tough way to make a living. You know, parking vehicles at a marina and transporting materials to and from a site. That doesn't work, not in today's society. So think about what you're doing. You're trying to appease as many people as you can, but yet you've got a group of people back here that are trying to make a living, and trying to enforce some of these rules is just ridiculous. You know, we all need to do a little bit better and trying to adhere to as many of these ordinances we possibly can. I get phone calls constantly. Can you move a trailer? Well, because somebody's down. You know what? I'd move a trailer. I mean, I realize some people don't, but we all need to do what we can do to help the situation out, and I think slapping us on the hand is not the answer. You know? Like I say, all of yous, if you're working, your paychecks are driven off of 12 months out of the year, 52 weeks out of the year. You know, not eight months, seven months. So take all this into consideration. The contractors are trying hard to get these jobs in. Most of these jobs take over a year to do. How can we, after Labor Day, how can we demo a house, dry pilings, put a foundation in, and build a house, and have it done by Memorial Day? Some cases, it can, but most of these houses here are nice. They take a lot of time. You know, how are you going to do cutoff points? You can't do no more outside work. You can only do inside work. So it's tough. You know, it's tough. You know, so you're getting revenue from these people, and now you're trying to tell these people, we can't have your house done in this calendar year. It's going to take two calendar years to do, because these are the ordinances and the rules that we want to try to stick to. So if you can, think about this stuff just a little bit, you know, before we come to a conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address, Mayor and Council?
Jim Barnes, DL Minor Construction. Generally speaking, we have a set of standards and protocols for each of our projects on the island that we try to adhere to the already provided rules and regulations. We also try to take a step above that, where on holiday weekends, we actually pull our dumpsters to provide additional parking spaces for, you know, tourists in town. We often put trailers onsite, again, to put those parking spots available on holiday weekends, but on traditional workdays and weekdays, we are pliable, and we often move trailers daily to have dumpsters picked up. And then we also have additional protocols of sweeping sidewalks, at least on Fridays. We do it every day a little bit, but end of the week, Fridays and Saturdays, we have standards and protocols to clear those out. But it just seems to have kind of gotten a little overzealous recently, where we're almost policed for these things if, you know, everybody has a little bit of play, but it seems like it's kind of gotten a little out of hand with the oversight. So we do have these standards and protocols and practices all in place, but, you know, sometimes a dumpster needs to be moved in order for a trailer to be moved. Sites are on a corner lot, so you can't be 50 feet from either side of the corner, so then you have a trailer on one side and a dumpster on the other side, and, you know, if you, God forbid, you have two trailers, it just becomes difficult. So again, you know, what this gentleman just said a minute ago, we do try to be pliable. We move things when neighbors asks, but, you know, there has to be some give and take provided, and that's just given the general regulations that are already in place. To change the existing ordinances would make it even more difficult with the construction hours and potentially, you know, only interior work on Saturdays between, you know, the Labor Day hours and stuff like that. So it's just kind of confining us to even more regulations, where we have generally been known to turn houses around from Labor Day to Memorial Day. Some of them extend a little bit further, and with the additional regulations in place, it might be very difficult to accomplish those tasks, so.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Michael Weber. I represent the 84 Lumber Companies. Kind of feel a little bit like Yogi Bear with Deja Vu all over again. I've had council discussions down the coast. I represent 84 from Cape May Point all the way up to Brigantine on the island. So I faced this problem in Longport. I faced this problem in Ocean City, Margate, and have seen councils and local politicians and employees try to work together collectively with various tradesmen who are here today, the builders, the homeowners, and the suppliers like myself who are here as well. It's a tough task, I understand it, to make everybody happy. We look at these amendments here. The one that really strikes me is number four, only allowing interior work on Saturdays. It is extremely difficult for these tradesmen and craftsmen to get these projects done in a timely fashion. Time is money, as everybody here in this room knows. And in the wintertime, when we get into the northeasters and the ice and the snow and the rain, where the siders lose three, four days, where the carpenters can't work outside because of the cold or the elements, now in the summertime in the spring is when these men can really, you know, catch up. They can make money. They can get a little bit ahead of the game so that when those terrible days come, when the poor weather days come, they can work inside and bring their men inside so they don't lose a day's pay. It's very, very difficult. And the other thing is, I started in 1979, so, you know, 38 years of doing this, I've seen a lot of changes. There's, on average, in these complex multimillion-dollar homes that you see on these beachfronts and bayfronts here in town, there's a reason why people want to be in Stone Harbor. It's because of the wonderful houses you have. We're building these people's dream houses. They're very, very complex. You might have somewhere between 30 and 40 different craftsmen, different groups, coming through on a typical house, a typical custom home here. It's not like building a 1,200-square-foot rancher on the mainland where you drop it and go. It's, there's a lot of complex stuff here that takes talented, dedicated, knowledgeable men and, you know, really, really high-end materials that have to be handled properly. Just an example from my end, we invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in machines for my trucks, so that when we deliver lumber in your town, we take the lumber off the back of the truck with this machine, and this machine can't go just frontwards and backwards. This machine goes sideways, left and right, because we have postage-stamp lots here, and we're trying to work with the builders and with the community, and we want to place the material on the job site, not in the street, not on the sidewalk, so that we can conform and make it a good project. And these machines, all our trucks have, these machines are hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, some of these other additional addendums, you know, I can understand them, but number four, it's just not workable. I don't think, if you polled these people in this room today, I don't think you'd find anyone in this room that's not working six days a week. I mean, if you asked for a show of hands, honestly, I'd say probably 90% are working six days a week, and it's not by choice. We're doing it because we have to, because we have to get the project done, because we might bid a project six, eight months ago, like right now. We bid these projects six, eight months ago. Well, we're getting ready to start right now. The houses are being knocked down, the foundations are going in. Well, between what went on in Dallas and what went on in Florida and now Puerto Rico, the lumber and plywood markets have gone to historical highs. That means that everybody in this room that's building has already lost money, because the increase is somewhere between 25 to 40%. And there's only one way around that. They've got to move quicker, they've got to get the product up, and they've got to get their homeowners in a timely fashion, and still do it while performing quality work, you know? We want to conform to the building inspector. We want to be reasonable in how we treat the men that work with us, and, you know, we're here to try and do a good job, but it's hard. It's really hard.
Thank you. Anybody else? There's a lot of you out there.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Rich Fuchs. I am a property owner here in Stone Harbor, but I'm here today as the treasurer of Stone Harbor Property Owners Association. I've been asked by the executive committee and the trustees of the Property Owners Association to speak on their behalf. First, the property owners, we have over 1,000 members. They're all homeowners here in Stone Harbor. A large proportion of them, as you're aware, are homeowners who either reside here on a seasonal basis or, in many cases, full-time. We do have members who also are renters, individuals who lease their homes during the season, so they have a financial interest in their property that is a little larger than maybe some of us who really are here because of our personal enjoyment of what is a magnificent and treasured island called Stone Harbor. We've discussed, we polled members, we've got feedback. As Jill mentioned, many of the pieces of feedback that were received this past year were received through the Property Owners Association. We have a two-way communication with our members, and we get, oftentimes, we are the first source for many of the comments and complaints that come in. We feed them through to Jill and to the folks in the borough, and as you know, they're been dealt with there. So we really are more of an informational conduit than somebody that takes action. On the whole, the Property Owners Association and the members, the 1,000-plus members of the Property Owners Association, are supportive of the changes that are being proposed by the borough. They believe it's a good first step, a compromise. It is, to our understanding, consistent with the ordinances that exist elsewhere in our area, Avalon and Cape May, two examples, but also elsewhere in what we would consider resort or seasonal communities. We are a seasonal community. You're well aware of that. I mean, you drive the streets today versus back in the middle of July, and we all know that. And because we are a seasonal community, and in many cases, many of our members are owners who work during the week and therefore only are able to take advantage of their property and the enjoyment of their property, either on the weekends and/or the one or two weeks a year they may holiday here, for them, that time is sacred, and it is very important to them, those individuals who have invested a substantial sum of money in their properties, and who, by the way, are the customers of all these ladies and gentlemen who are working in the construction trades. We are their customers. We want to have a quality relationship, our members, I should say, want to have a quality relationship with the trades, because, again, we are the customers, we are the individuals who rely on them to fulfill the contracts that our members have entered into. But again... But, again, we believe very sternly that the weekend is sacred to our members, and so therefore, in terms of the limitations on the weekends, I think it's fair to say that our members are strongly supportive of that. Our members understand, because they were also individuals who at one time may have built a home, may have torn a home down and had it rebuilt. They understand that that may cause delays in their project, that the adoption of these ordinances may have cost as well as time implications. And the feedback we've had from members has been, that is the price they're willing to pay. They think the market will take care of that, but if it is the case, so be it, because the trade-off is not only their enjoyment going forward, but also maybe very important to our members is the relationship with their neighbors. So when their project is going on, their concerns are not only to their own personal enjoyment and use, but the impact on their neighbors. And that's important to them, because as was mentioned, we are small lots, we live very close to each other, we have close relationships with our neighbors, and our members are very sensitive to the views of their neighbors while they are in the midst of a project. So, again, we would support these. I would only make the observation to some of the comments made, and I'll use as an example, the gentleman who indicated that moving trailers is difficult and that they should be left and that people are willing to accept it. We've had feedback from members that have said they'd like to see them moved every day, taken off the island. However, I think in the interest of finding compromise, I think there is probably the majority that do realize it's important that the tradesmen are able to prepare and to conduct their work appropriately. And so we'll push back on those. We'll push back on those individuals and say, you know, is that really reasonable? Is that in your best interest as well as the interest of those who are working for you? So we do get a lot of feedback, and it runs the gamut, and much of it is very, very tightly tied to peace and quiet, respect, and the enjoyment of what is for these individuals a very, very substantial investment. So, again, in summary, we would support these ordinances, the changes to these ordinances as well as existing ordinances, as a good compromise between the interests of the homeowners and the interests of the tradesmen. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said you polled a thousand members.
No, I didn't poll a thousand.
How many did you poll?
We've polled, I can't remember the number offhand, but our polling has come from individuals who've come back to us with feedback throughout the year.
So you don't have a number?
I don't have a number, no.
There was no official survey done, if that's the...
That was my question.
No, we did not do an official survey. Our polling is based on feedback taken from our members at our two membership meetings, where we had several hundred members in attendance at each of those meetings, as well as feedback taken via our website.
I was at that meeting, I wasn't polled.
You weren't, it wasn't discussed, but there was quite a bit of discussion before and after.
But my question to you is, you don't have any firm commitment of how many you polled and how many said that they did not...
We did not do a poll on this issue in the interest of time. We can do a poll if that's something that the council is interested in, it's very easy to put together with our electronic databases.
I just don't want anything falsely said, that it sounded like when you said you polled a thousand members, that a thousand members agreed that we should stop this, or at least a good major, excuse me, at least a good majority of them.
Right, no, I did not say that we polled a thousand members. I said we have a thousand members, and I said we've had significant feedback from our membership, both through our electronic communication systems as well as feedback trustees have had during membership meetings and through other forms of communication. But we are, we stand ready to poll our membership if that's something council would be interested in.
Thank you.
I appreciate your mentioning the fact, we worked long and hard on this, and it wasn't something that was done arbitrarily. We did look at the ordinances in both Avalon and Cape May and other surrounding communities. And just for my own information, how many of you work in Avalon? You've got these same ordinances there, and I appreciate your bringing that out. Thank you.
And in feedback, ma'am, that was one of the things that we pushed back, again, on those individuals who gave us feedback that suggested much more stringent. We said, look, we should be consistent with other communities along the shore and in our area, in an interest of fairness to those individuals, the professionals who are working in these areas. We don't see Stone Harbor needing anything more. There are some that would say that, but we believe that as long as we're consistent with the other communities, that that should present a fair compromise to all parties.
And I think if all the contractors, and many of them are, were the same as the, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, the first individual, who does take care of his work site and does clean the streets and the sidewalks and doesn't tear them up and leave them torn up for months, that would have gone a long way to preventing any of the uproar that we're hearing, and we are getting a lot of emails and so forth about this. So we're trying to work a compromise that is not anything different than our surrounding communities have, and try to make this a win-win situation. But when you come down and you spend $14,000 or more a week to rent a place, and you've got all kinds of trash and everything blowing around, and you've got all kinds of noise going on before 8 o'clock in the morning, that's not a vacation. So we're trying to do something that works with our other communities and is the same for all of you. You're abiding by those rules elsewhere, and that's what we're trying to put in place here. Thank you.
I think one other thing that should be noted is that we invited all of the contractors to be able to voice their opinion, but there's one group that is heavily influenced by this, and that is the real estate agencies. I have one real estate agent who told me that she had to refund 25% at the end of the week to the renter, because the renter was so disturbed by the lack of quiet on the weekends, and by the disturbance and the blowing of the garbage and all of that that we all know about all week long. So, in my opinion, I think if we had abided by our current regulations and if they had been more strictly enforced on our part, we may not even be here today.
And I'd like to add one other thing, if you don't mind.
Just in the interest of time, just so if we can hear, before we, I would like to save our discussion till the end, so we can give people an opportunity. I don't want to run out of time, but I'd like to hear from as many people, both residents and contractors as possible.
How you doing? I'm Dan Young from PM Pools, and there's a couple of things on here I just wanted to mention. I understand that, like you said, in the city of, borough of Avalon, you're not allowed to work on holiday weekends and things. I understand that. I personally don't really have a huge problem with that. I have more of an issue with number four on your list, where only interior work is allowed done on Saturdays. We do a lot of rental changeover pool cleanings on Saturdays, which would be considered outside work by a contractor. People are spending, like you mentioned, $14,000 for a week to come down on vacation. If we have to clean and sanitize the pool the day before they get there, we can't control what the tenant that's in there until Saturday at 11 o'clock is doing, and would you want to come down to a pool that you don't know if it's really as clean as it should be? If you just spent that kind of money? I look at it from the standpoint of the renter, it doesn't seem like a reasonable option to make a blanket statement of no outside work. I think maybe if you guys, and I hate saying this because I know some of the contractors aren't going to like what I have to say here, but if you limit what can and can't be done, I think it might be better to refine that fourth option there some. The other question I have for is, on number two, it says, you know, no work prior to 8:00 AM or after 6:00 PM, no heavy equipment prior to 9:00. Well, a lot of people here in these trades were using different pieces of heavy equipment, but after Labor Day, one of the issues we're going to find is it gets dark before 6:00. So we can't start late and work late because we lose light. I understand maybe in the summertime, you know, 9:00 may have to be what it is, because we have longer days, but in the wintertime, the fall, the spring, if you have a shorter day and you start later, now it ends up, or a project that should have been able to be done in one day becomes a two-day process, which then could in turn increase the cost of the project as a whole, which is then is going to go back onto the homeowners, you know? And, you know, you get to a point where sometimes people decide that they want to build their home on a different island or a different end of the island because of some of the restrictions that are going to cause price differences, you know? If that could be taken into consideration. As far as for the trailers, if I can get a little bit of clarification, you're talking about parked trailers that are disconnected from vehicles and left on job sites, or ones that are connected to a truck and used and taken from job site to job site through the course of a day? With us, our company, we don't disconnect and leave them. So I may end up having to have to park across the street in front of someone else's house, because there is no place that I can get my truck and trailer, because there's a size requirement to find a parking spot. You know, in those cases, yes, I'm going to block someone's home, but it's for a matter of a couple hours while I'm working on that job, and then I'm leaving. You know, I don't know if that's what you guys are intending, that you can only park a vehicle connected to a truck in front of a job site, but like one of the gentlemen said, you can't always fit, you know? And there's a lot of people trying to work on one project on any given day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sherry Tomlinson, live at 26906, and I walk around town a lot. And I have just one small question. Is it required that a contractor put his name on the job? Should we see a sign along with the building permit that says, "Who is doing that job"? Because we've seen some of these that I think are developer specials, no identification. You don't know who. So that's where you get the sidewalks that are nothing but sand and dirt and mud. That's where we've seen those. And some of these trailers, you look up between, on Third, between 122nd and 121st, it's a parking lot, and most of those disconnected trailers are not identified. I think we could solve a lot of things if we just required that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Majeski, Majeski Plumbing. I just wanted to further on the trailer situation. From a plumbing standpoint, there's a lot of material we need to get onto the jobs, and we try to get in and out as fast as possible, but to ask us to move these trailers from in front of the jobs every single day is going to be extremely impossible. Well, not impossible, but harder to get the job done. And some municipalities, I know in CL, they require a permit to park the trailer on the city streets, and, you know, as the lady just said, there's a lot of trailers that are not identified, and they're, they look like garbage. And if we could, you know, weed out the riffraff and maybe impose a permit, so that we could park a lettered trailer that is, you know, certified by the state or what have you, it would help expedite the process of getting the job done and remove some of the eyesore. That's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
May I just clarify? That ordinance does not say you have to move your trailer every day. It says at the end of a project. It's in an already existing ordinance, and it's at the end of the project. There are contractors who just leave them there for months, and that's what that particular ordinance addresses. You don't have to move it every day.
Hello, committee. My name is Mark Sironi. I'm the president of Exclusive Land Design. I'm asking for a little clarification with four as well. To reiterate what Dan had mentioned about attached towers versus detached towers, I think we need to consider how that will be defined at the time, as well as our maintenance, maintenance work that's done on Saturdays, i.e. lawn cutting when you have a rainy day during the week and you need a pickup day, those kinds of things should be addressed or maybe even included in some kind of exclusion. I'm not sure how you're going to police this, if the police department is going to do something like this, but we should get a little bit more clarification on how and what industries, more specifically, before it's written, because it will, like many have said, cause an issue for us to catch up time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up, Bonnie.
I'm here representing the residents.
Who are you?
No one else. My name is Bernadette Parsick. I live at 9925 Sunset Drive. And I'll be very unpopular after this. The builders here are helping to recreate Stone Harbor from a small, intimate, little family town into a show-stopping family town. We've driven up the streets, all of us, up and down the streets and avenues, and the new houses are ever more large and ever more ornate and beautiful, and they take a long time to build. There seems to be no limit to the number of new houses. The big money is here in Stone Harbor, and they're spending a lot of the money on new construction. But the process of building these big, beautiful new homes is having a negative effect on the quality of life of the residents, the non-resident homeowners, the tourists in this town, especially in the summer. It's exacerbating our parking problems in the summer, with constant parking of numerous dumpsters, trailers, big commercial trucks that stay put. They take up residence. We encourage bicycle riding, we've put in, we finally painted these lanes on Second Avenue, but to get, from the families, to get to the lanes, you have to drive through the streets and driving around these dumpsters and trailer upon trailer. The families are taking their lives in their hands. You can't see around them. The vehicles are unsightly. Public Works, the Gardening Club, the ROA, work hard at beautifying the town. Not to mention all the private resident owners hiring the landscaping to beautify their private properties. We're trying to be a beautiful town, yet... Yet, yet the new constructions are working against us. Most elusive is the loss of peace and quiet. Every new construction affects at least six to eight homes, surrounding homes, with the noise of the construction. July and August are months of intense usage here. They are the two main reasons for which the big money invests here to begin with, July and August. Stone Harbor is the beautiful place to be in July and August. They're the two reasons that the non-resident second homeowners pay about 90% of our ratables and our bills all year round. We need to allow the residents, their guests, the second homeowners, and the visitors. We need to, we owe them the space to allow and enjoy the peace and quiet. This summer, the building was out of control. I heard it testified that there were 30 active building sites. Let's be what we say we are. The sea's sure at its best. You're in charge of this. I would suggest the following. This is the unpopular part. In July and August, I propose that you put a moratorium on all exterior building. No demolitions, no pile driving, no cutting of masonry materials, no exterior building work of any kind, nor cutting of building materials outside, no loud building noise, no dumpsters nor trailers parked on the public streets, no big machinery, trucks parked on the streets before 8:00 or after 6:00, move them every night. Emergency repairs or maintenance issues like cleaning pools wouldn't, I don't think should be included. Quiet interior work can be done seven days a week. You're in charge. Now, I hope you read some of the comments from the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anybody else? Okay. What we're going to do now is read into the record some correspondence we've received. received via email.
This first letter is from Jim Guntel. Dear Mayor Davies Dunhour, I'm sure you have made priorities that you're working on, but I'm asking you, when you have a little time, to try to come up with a solution to a problem that I have been, that is ongoing and worsening. I live at the corner of 122nd Street and Third Avenue. I built my home years ago on a lot that I paid a premium for because of the outstanding views. On more weekends than not, I have a rusty old construction equipment parked on 122nd and Third in front of my house and the empty lot across the street, which absolutely ruins my view of the wetlands. When I built my home, I made sure the builders did not park any construction equipment overnight in front of any property but mine. The construction equipment obstructing my beautiful view has been taken away, projects a block away and over a mile away, and the equipment is parked on most days and all weekends. The construction people know this is an annoyance to residents, but do it anyway because it is more convenient for them. When I called the owners of the equipment to please move the equipment, they were often reluctant to move the equipment, which I assume is legally parked, and evidently, they end up telling me that they are parking in front of my property because other property owners have already asked them to move their equipment from in front of my home, from in front of their homes. The property is worsening. Early this summer, I had a piece of construction equipment parked across the street without moving for over three months. There is no equipment blocking my view currently, only because I had a couple of aggravating conversations today with a few construction workers who tried to slip in quickly and leave their equipment for the weekend. I am growing weary of this, and I need help. In addition to the eyesore, it is now creating additional problems. Earlier this summer, I had construction workers congregating their cars near the construction equipment, which became their new meeting place before work. I've seen workers sleeping in their cars or just hanging out with their morning beverage, smoking in their cars. They may be decent people, but I have no idea who they are, and it makes me uncomfortable because my wife and daughter are occasionally here by themselves. Perhaps you can pass an ordinance that requires that construction equipment be parked overnight on construction company property or on the property site that they are working on. Maybe Stone Harbor can generate revenue by requiring that construction companies purchase permits to park overnight on unused municipal lots that don't impede Stone Harbor's residents. I know a number of people who have had the same problem and resorted to calling the police, which I do not want to do because I feel it takes the time away for more important law enforcement work. However, I do feel that something needs to be done, and if my above suggestions are implemented, it would alleviate the problems and create revenue for Stone Harbor by requiring municipal parking lot permits or hefty fines for not parking on construction sites. It is really aggravating and disheartening to spend millions of dollars for a pristine view and have it ruined for the convenience of construction contractors that in most cases are not even residents or taxpayers in Stone Harbor. We need to protect Stone Harbor's natural beauty and views while enhancing the experience of Stone Harbor residents and not let anyone detract from that for their own convenience. Thank you very much. Jill, I'm reading to you Judy and Karen in light of the last work session where construction ordinances were discussed. I was recognized at that time and was going to say, was open to, was going to open for discussion at the next meeting that builders would be invited to see comment. Property owners would send an email with their respective perspectives, since a lot of us are not in town. I worked with Bob Tramella, president of POA, to solicit feedback from members and composed a letter enclosed in this email to a variety of folks that, like me, had a lot to say about construction in town during this past summer. They were just not at the public meeting, like I was, to state their position. There was encouragement to receive comments. Here are a few additional items I'd like to point out. I believe that Councilman Lane and her committee did a solid job getting us the four items, which are, I believe, are extremely achievable. I have seen it work in Palm Beach, again, in communities similar in dynamics to Stone Harbor, and I'm sure other towns that were studied. I also believe there are four changes, that these four changes are the beginning of building a new level playing field for how residents are treated. For example, I would hope that as we enforce these potentially acceptable ordinances, that we see evolution, to name a few. The penalty for breaking the ordinance on a repeated basis. Are we willing to shut down a site if there is abuse with ways to reopen the site? Removal of trailers for safety and aesthetics. The number of trucks allowed contiguous to a property, and the abuse of parking in front of driveways because they're only there for a minute and it turns into an hour. This is a tough one, given how small our lots are. Do we limit the amount of building at any point in the process because, cumulatively, it's overload of construction on the island, and the code enforcer can't enforce effectively? That said, I believe we have to start somewhere and test the theory. And the proposed, or these proposed are incredibly valid. Further, when an application comes, I believe the contractor should sign a form that tells the borough that they have read the ordinances and will abide by them. I also think the owner of the property should do the same. After all, the owner wants to have neighbors that feel like that they were a part of the process, even if they're not here during the winter months. As per my letter, I noted that anyone should recognize a best practice, and I have one. Next to me, Craig Otten. He starts on time and even delays, and even delays in the morning. He puts crushed blue stone down to limit the amount of dust. The job site is spotless. They sweep all the time. The workers, when they are there, are kind, respectful, and delightful. No loud music, no yelling, unduly on the job site. He checks his dumpsters constantly, informs us to anything, informs us as to anything we might see that was unusual to call him. During a storm, part of my property sank. They fixed mine before they fixed their own. So while not ordinance-driven, it is respect-driven, and maybe plain and simple good business. I will leave it to you to make whatever comments publicly. I've said this basically during my last meeting. From Dave Gons at 915th Street. I received an email from a neighbor regarding the review of construction ordinances in Stone Harbor, and would like to share two observations. I have included Jeff on this email. I'm very appreciative of the council to review the practices and construction on the island. Our house was rebuilt three years ago, and our neighbor's, and our neighbor's was done two years ago, so we know firsthand the challenges in building in a small community with houses close together. It does need attention. First, I want to send a compliment to the builder that is currently constructing a house on the corner of 105th and First. They worked during the summer and have maintained an immaculate site, as well as kept the sidewalks clear and safe in spite of heavy rains this summer. My hat's off to them. My second observation is regarding number four on the proposed change of list, change list. Limiting construction to only the interior of a building is at best very difficult. In most cases, the tools used to work on the interior are set up outside, saws, materials, compressors. The work done on the interior is an important step of the construction, and limiting the tools to be used would hamper and ultimately delay the construction process, which would not be desirable to the homeowner. If need, if need be, limit the hours, 8 to 12 a.m., but restrict the use of tools on a job site would be very difficult to oversee, as well as disruptive to the workmen. Thank you for listening. I'm sorry I cannot attend the meeting. From John Reddy, 216 105th. Jill, I am writing this in order that my thoughts are conveyed to mayor and council for this Tuesday's meeting. It is my understanding that our current ordinance concerning construction is under review. In my opinion, there's a balance between ongoing construction and a homeowner enjoying their home for the two months that most of them use it. Construction of new homes and infrastructure are extremely important to this island. Owning a home and paying taxes is equally important, but in between is the 60 days that are most important. That's July and August, when we're busy with summer activities and enjoying our home. The contractors have 12 months a year to develop properties. I don't think it's too much to ask that Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day be set aside as holidays that are no workdays, along with Sundays in July and August. The only reason a contractor argues against this is they're trying to build as many houses as humanly possible in a short period of time. It doesn't take seven days a week for, for a year or more to build a house. Case in point, the Reeds was built in one year, a one-year time period. It's the volume they are talking, taking is the issue. Maybe we approve too many permits at one time. Additionally, the work can be accommodated by a 10-hour workday, 8 a.m. to 6 p.m. The other issues of the amount of equipment on the street and parked for days and weeks have been used, without being used, can easily be managed. Everything decided on such then be incorporated into a new revised ordinance that reflects the times we live in and should not continue with a dated ordinance that doesn't reflect today's realities. When completed, the council's decision should mirror the concerns of its taxpayers while enabling commerce and progress to thrive. And lastly, any ordinance should be enforced, and those that don't comply should be penalized. We live in a great town with millions of dollars, have been invested. It is our best interest to establish worktimes that satisfy the investors. From Sam Thomas, 1011th Street. I support the proposed changes to construction ordinances circulated on the agenda for 3 p.m. October 3rd. In addition, I suggest that, if possible, trailers should be parked on the construction property rather than on the street if left for more than five days. I'd like to offer the following comments regarding our experience. In the past 10 years, we have had two new houses constructed adjacent to our house, 1011th Street and First Avenue at 111th. The house east of us on the northeast corner of First, 111th, was constructed roughly five years ago. With the suggested changes, kept the work site and surrounding area very clean and orderly. Most interior work was completed in the November to April time period. We had no issues with any equipment or contractors. In contrast, the house immediately north of us, 11015 First Avenue, was constructed approximately 10 years ago and was not a pleasant experience. The contractors often left the work site sloppy, including construction debris on our property. There were a lot of incidences where our driveway was blocked or trucks parked in yellow curb areas adjacent to our driveway. The contractors were slow to move the vehicles when asked, and at least on one instance, my wife was verbally abused when she asked a vehicle, that a vehicle be moved. The construction proceeded through the summer, September and October, when parking is tight, particularly on weekends, contributing to a number of these issued. The police did respond to the address of the abuse incident. You're welcome to read this email at the meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Before council starts to have discussion among us, is there anybody else you'd like to come up to the podium? So, we've heard from...
Judy, I'd like to say something.
Well, one thing I'd like to do to start with, because we've heard from this side. These guys have not spoken.
But you haven't heard from me, so I do want to speak.
Right. But, okay, but I want to make sure that I get to this side, because it seems like I'm always still getting to this side.
Okay, that's fine, but I do want to speak before you end it.
I'm in favor of the ANF's ideas. There might be a couple of things, after listening today, that can be rearranged or addressed, and one of them was the pools. But I, I have a habit of riding around town because this is my home, and I would agree that it has finally gotten to the point where it is completely out of control. And I would agree with what Mantora said. We, we have to do a better job. It starts here. And I just want to make sure everybody understood what Jill read first, are existing ordinances. This we first have to do, because this has been done for years and years, and it can be done. It's not hard. And the word "respect" needs to be right there on the top. We all need to respect our neighbors. We all need to respect these ordinances. These were written. They used to work, and they're going to work again. So I completely agree with what you're saying. We have to do a better job, and I know that we can. I don't think it's going to be hard. The proposals that are put forth, I'm going to be bluntly honest, just like everyone else can, I think they're way too easy. But I support them. I think we have to start someplace. I think we have to give people a vacation. It's not just the ones that come here that need it, it's the ones that live here. So I think that we're on the right track. I support it, and that's my two cents.
This is a complicated issue. There's a lot of different facets in it, and I've been thinking about it for quite some time. I support these suggestions as well. They need to be tweaked a little bit based on what we heard, but personally, I don't feel they go far enough. And let me, let me just go back a little bit. In about an 18-month period, the home next to us was constructed, and the one next to that was constructed. So the two properties to the south of us, in about an 18-month period, Randy Wine Developers did it. Matt Pappas, who I think is here, I could not have, we could not have had a more polite builder in the area. He went out of his way to do everything he could to mitigate the adverse effects of all this construction. He did a great job. It was still extremely inconvenient. And this is what, you know, you, the builders have to understand that. We have, we have the taxpayers to consider, and as Josie said, the people who come down to enjoy this place in July and August. Again, I don't know, enforcing the existing ordinances are part of it. These new four ordinances that have been suggested will help. I'm not sure it goes far enough. I would like to hear from, I don't, I'm amazed at the outpouring of builders here. It would, could we somehow have a meeting of homeowners that could, and invite homeowners to come and give us all their opinions? Because we're not going to make a decision tonight, right? We're not going to vote on anything tonight. But it would be nice to hear from some homeowners, publicize it, and get their side of it. Some of these builders brought up things that I hadn't considered, you know, before we go forward and craft these changes. You guys need to think about what was said tonight about a moratorium on building in July and August. That's not out of the realm of possibility. That's how strongly some of us feel about our obligations to our homeowners. You guys are all smart individuals. You can probably figure out how to make that work. But you, you know, you need time to think about that. So it's out there now. I'm sure not everybody on council would support that, but some of us would. So even if we have to hear from you again, after we hear from the homeowners, because I don't think we're in a huge rush to do this right now. We want to make sure we do it right. I think these few suggestions are minimal. I mean, it's, but I don't think it goes far enough.
I want to start by first and foremost thanking everyone who is in attendance today on this issue. I think it's, it's important that we get this feedback, and I'm happy to say that this, I feel like due process is taking place here, rather than at the last meeting where some, some of these changes were proposed. And we didn't move forward without, I didn't personally feel comfortable moving forward without hearing from everyone on this issue. And I think Ray brings up a really good point. I think further discussion is needed. I think I would certainly like to hear from homeowners who are, who would come in personally and explain their thoughts, as well as homeowners, perhaps, who some of you builders are representing right now, to discuss their trials and tribulations that they're experiencing during the construction process. So I think further discussion is always a good thing. Let's do this when we do it. Let's get it right. One consideration, it seems like there was a lot of discussion with item number four relating to work on Saturdays. My initial thoughts are this, and I brought it up at the last meeting, so, and I do, I'm weighing this as I, as I sit here, and I completely understand that July and August really are the, are the key months here, and that's when we're in full swing here. This is when our island is most enjoyed. All aspects of our island, including the beaches, are, you know, put to use. So I understand that. I guess my concern is on Saturdays, all we're doing is kicking the can down the road, so to speak. So if we prohibit any work on Saturdays, that's a day of work. So that day of work will have to be done at some point, and it will have, it will just shove a project further down the road. So that's, that's really my only consideration with that one, is do we want these projects to move along as quickly and as efficiently as possible so that they come to completion sooner rather than later? Balancing that with peaceful enjoyment of people... Balancing that with peaceful enjoyment of people's properties during the prime time is, is a tough one, and I think we have to be very measured in our approach, and I think we need to think this through more. And I think today was a really good beginning to vetting all these issues, and coming to a good, good ordinance that respects everyone's interests. And I would love to hear from more homeowners personally. We heard some emails, we heard, personally each of us have heard from homeowners, all of us being included, and I would welcome more of that feedback. It can only help.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say, look out here, these are regular people like myself. They're trying to make a decent living. So I think communication and mutual respect needs to come together on both ends. We can make this work. We need to work together. You need to voice your opinions, your concerns, to the council, so that we can work on this together. I want to tell everybody, I have firsthand knowledge of the construction issue, not from a year ago, not from two or three years ago, but from the last 10 months with a huge home being built across the street from me. To start off with, we have some of these ordinances on the books, and we, when we brought it to our chief shudder, he was made aware of this in September, and he and his officers were very cognizant of enforcing the ordinances. He went out, he gave warnings, I believe, I, I can't verify this, there perhaps were fines. So they are working on those types of ordinances. So I believe that we can come together, but we need to do it as an effort among ourselves. Either you have to have a spokesman for all of you, or maybe two or three, get a spokesman that can come to the council and give your ideas or your concerns. I know you're not all public speakers, so a lot of you are maybe intimidated to get up, or you don't want to get up, but maybe you can have a spokesman for yourself. We don't want the homeowner short cutted, because you're trying to make up time, because they're investing a lot of money in their home, so we don't want that either. Time is money for you, I know it. But let's work together. Let's try enforcing the ordinances and see where we go from there.
First of all, I would like to make it perfectly clear that I think it was the healthy dialogue that took place today among citizens, residents of the town, of contractors who might not necessarily live here, but who do work here, and council. And I think that's the only way we're going to arrive at a decision that's going to be fair to everybody. So I applaud you for coming, and I applaud, applaud my fellow council members for being willing to hear you. This is how it's going to happen. However, one thing was clear to me today, and I think that some of your concerns and complaints, and ideas that certain things are holding you back, are not relevant to what we're trying to do right now, but are already in place. And they're things that are ordinances, they're part of ordinances that should be enforced right now. So if you look at that two or three-page plan that Jill presented, they are already our laws. So if you have issues with those, there's not much we can do about that, because they are our ordinances. It's these four, this four-pronged effort that is presented right here, that is the only thing that is going to be added, or actually enhanced, to the ordinances that we already have. But my biggest question to all of you is that you, by your own admission, you said that you also work in Avalon. Do those four, that four-pronged improvement, does it stop you from getting your job done in Avalon? And if so, how do you get it all done? Why can't we employ whatever it is that you use in Avalon to help us to get the job done together? I had a situation that I reported to the zoning officer, because this particular year, we have quite a bit of, of construction in our neighborhood. We're getting it in stereo. I've apologized all summer long to all of my guests, because you can't sit on the porch. That's okay, because I'm going to have three beautiful houses to look at very soon. I agree with, I, I can understand that, I can tolerate that, I'll appreciate it as soon as the noise goes down. However, one of the contractors was making no parking signs, homemade, no parking signs, so that, for the obvious. He didn't want anyone to park there, so that he could come in with his equipment. So I reported it to our zoning officer, he went over, he talked to him, the no parking sign came down. I have to tell you, that no parking sign came back up, two days later, it's there today. So that kind of stuff continues. That is not going to be able to enhance the relationship that we have, if that's the kind of thing that will continue to happen. I realize that we have finished that, that difficult season of July and August, and now you can just work without as many impediments, and I'm so happy that you can do that, because then my stereo sounds are going to go away. But I think that we've got to all take it upon ourselves to adjust, and to be fair, and be fair not only to the people in the neighborhood, but to other, other vendors or other workers who come in, because maybe somebody's coming in to trim the trees of the house next door, and he sees a no parking sign, so he's not going to park there. So I think that we all have to keep all of those things in mind, and the bottom line is exactly what the representative from Shippoa said to us today, it's all about respect. And if we respect each other's property, and we, if we expect each, if we respect each other's ability and privilege of having a quiet, beautiful surrounding, we're all going to be able to work together.
This, these, these four, these four suggested, I'll call them suggested items, I think is a start, is a starting point. I, I mean, if we hear from, we should hear from real estate people who deal with this stuff all the time, and we should hear, we should invite, I don't know how you do that, make, make a public announcement that homeowners are encouraged to come, because we're going to talk about this, like we talked about it today, and get their input. So these four may not be what we end up with, we may end up with something a little more, depending on what we hear.
Well, just one minute. Go ahead, Karen.
Oh, okay, thank you. I do appreciate everyone coming out. It's nice to see that there is interest there, and you are concerned, and, and as are we. These four suggestions are nowhere meant to be legal by any means. This would go to our attorney to draft illegal. The interior work, we're not talking about pools and things like that, we're talking on the building trades, and maybe that does have to be tweaked. But the word constantly comes forward, and, and that should be the topic of our discussion is the respect. And many of you do have that respect. Do keep your work sites clean, do try to work with the neighbors and let them know, hey, this is going to happen, I'm sorry, but there's no way around it. But when you leave a job site filthy, when you tear up the sidewalk and leave it that way, when you park your vehicles there for months on end, even after you've gone to another job, and your vehicles aren't even marked, so they don't even really know who they are, those few bad apples are creating the problem for everybody. So this was just, we, we can tweak this, and I agree, we should hear more. We, we've heard a lot from the residents. Not in necessarily a public meeting occasionally, but we've heard a lot, these are a few. I've heard from a lot more personally. Most of these, these four items are meant to be during the season. The holidays and July 1 through Labor Day. Some of that may not have been clear, like number two, no work prior to 8:00 AM and after 6:00. We mean that for the season, because generally, if it's anything like my neighborhood, there's not a soul around my house except me. So nobody's going to care if you're working on that house by, at 8:00 o'clock, or maybe working until 7:00 o'clock, because there's no one around you. But during the season, they care. And when they're paying top dollar to not only buy a home here, but maybe to rent a home here, they're going to care a whole lot. So we have to come to an agreement that will be mutually workable for all of us. And if it's already working in Avalon, where most of you work, and it's already working in Cape May, where many of you work, and all the surrounding coastal communities, it has to be able to work in Stone Harbor as well. But thank you again for coming.
Judy, I just have one thing. I just want to say that maybe we should consider limiting the amount of permits we distribute every year.
Well, one thing I am glad that, that Karen clarified is the no work on any site prior to 8:00 AM. I thought that you were looking at something 12 months of the year, and did not realize that's just the season.
Just the season, because I think our start time is 7:00, I believe.
No, our start time's 8:00. Our start time is 8:00, is 8:00, because I just keep, I just kept looking at, if you have no demolition, and you can't use any tools prior to 9:00, and you can't work on the Saturdays.
But that's only, that's two months.
Right, but as I was looking at the whole picture, it's pushing every project further and further and further down the line. And then, the one thing is that everybody that has a construction site next to them can rest assured, it's a finite project. This is going to make it longer. So as I was looking at some of these, and they started to add up, I was thinking it's getting, pushing it further and further and further, where actually the, the disruption gets longer, instead of lessens. I personally think strict enforcement of what we have on the books, and respect from the contractors, would be a great start. I do, I do know that this is, time is money, time is money, and this is, this is people who, this is their living, this is their livelihood, and we do not want to, we, we do not want to disrupt that, or we don't want to have a major effect on people's livelihood. If we could have your respect and cooperation, that would go a very long way. That being said, one other item that nobody's talking about, that I just always think about is this demolition. Now, it's my understanding that Avalon has no demolition between July 1 and Labor Day, and as a result, come Labor, come Labor Day, they've got some 70-odd shut-off scheduled. So now projects are even again pushed further. So I think as we start to think of these timelines, and they just keep pushing further, I don't know how good of an idea that is. And with the demolitions, maybe think about, a house is demolished, it seems to be in six or seven hours. And then it's done, and it's cleaned up. And then it's, you know, and probably a lot of times, people don't want a demo in the summer, because maybe they get that last rental or that last use out of it. But just something to think about with demolition. I would like to see the Saturdays tweaked a little bit, and see, I would like to allow as much work on a Saturday as possible. Like I said, time is money, and the homeowners, I mean, we do keep talking about those, those people who, you know, are being disrupted, but by the same token, the lives of that other taxpayers being disrupted while they wait for their home to be finished. And they are taxpayers. So we are representing both sides of this. We got a taxpayer that wants a job done, and we got a taxpayer that doesn't want to be disrupted while this person gets the maximum, and this person, where is that, you know, where's that middle point, which is where we need to get? To, and just to throw it out there, no construction during July and August, we'd be pushing majorly forward. That's like losing six, that's like 16% of your time. I, I'd be afraid of that. But that being said, we do represent those people who want a house done, not just those people who are living next to the construction site, but those people who want their house done. So it's a balance, it is complicated, and I don't, I, I just don't want to affect anybody, I guess is the bottom line. So if, if it is a respect issue, and it is a, you, you end up digging your own grave, and oftentimes, we're our own worst enemies. So if, even coming from this point forward, as we move forward and we get more discussion, and we talk to more homeowners, if you guys can be on your crews, because maybe the one person that, you know, could really turn it in some way, shape, or form, is going to speak out on your behalf, because you're maintaining a nice, clean site. So as we continue to move forward, don't be your own worst enemies. Just my thoughts.
Mr. Fokes from Shippoa has been having his, his hand was raised for quite a while.
Oh, the old second bite at the apple.
No, 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 second bite. Just simply an offer. I, several of the council members have indicated they'd like feedback and communication with the homeowners. As we know, being a seasonal community, and this point being, the weather slightly different than we had in the summer, a large number of the homeowners, a large number of our members are, have departed Stone Harbor. They've departed for their full-time homes, or in some cases, their winter homes. My offer is that we have access to our membership on a continuous basis through social media, electronic communications. We've been trying to upgrade, and have done a lot of work around upgrading communications. The offer I make to you is if we can facilitate that through polling, to Councilwoman Kramer's point, we'll be happy to do a formal poll of all the members, try to organize forums, et cetera, so that you get access to at least our membership.
Well, I actually did have a conversation with Bob Tramella about a poll.
Right, okay.
And the conversation, the gist of it was, how could such a poll be worded, where, what are you, what are you saying? You know what I mean? It's, would you rather not have any noise next door to you at all? Like, no, and I mean, I don't mean to sound like a big and facetious, but we had this conversation, him and I, how would such a poll be worded?
Of course.
Would be very difficult.
We, we have a number of members of our board of trustees who are in the communications field. I know we've polled in the past.
Right.
Again, the offer, we're happy to work with Jill, with Karen and her committee, with the entire council, to create, if that's something you'd like, to create a poll, create an information gathering forum that would facilitate your efforts. We may be able to look at other things, such as Skype meetings, time home meetings, we're trying to do more.
Or even just including your membership to send a correspondence.
We could do that as well. So again, I just make the offer to you all, if that's, it's, it seems that that's where the council would like to go, and we stand ready to support access to at least our membership in any way we can.
Thank you.
I think, I think we take that under advisement, because I think I would like to see residents here. You know, correspondence is great, surveys, you have to be careful with surveys.
Right. And like Bob, Bob Tramella and I had spoken about this, and you said, how do, how do you even conduct such a survey?
Well, three quarters of our residents are, have already departed, and you can tell by...
Yeah, I know, I know.
If they're gone, how are they going to come here to represent themselves?
It's like I said, and they can, they can submit, they can submit a letter if they'd like.
Well, that's, that's what they're talking about, to facilitate that, just as they did with the emails tonight, because to ask the residents, these builders are all around here, and they're around here all the time, so it wasn't a big stretch for them to get here, but it is, for the non-resident homeowners, a big stretch to get here, especially at this time of the year.
I understand that, but a lot of the, the correspondence that you got back, like, was based on answers to Jeff Alderton's email. So Jeff Alderton said, here's all the things that I think, now would like to see your letters. Now, that's, that's not, that's not an unbiased solicitation of a letter.
That's a little leaguing in nature, right.
Actually, they would do it in a biased, I'm sure they would present it in an unbiased way. How, I think that we should have the right to be able to review the, the survey before it goes out. I trust that it would be done professionally, but perhaps we should take that route.
Well, can, can we reach the residents who aren't Shippoa members?
Right, then you went, right, because they actually only represent, and of those thousand members, usually they're couples, so you're talking probably 500 households out of roughly 3,000.
That's not how it is.
In some cases, they're 1,000 individual houses.
Homeowners, okay, okay. But to Ray, to your point, that's 1/3.
And by 1/3.
Right, right. Question, somebody, does anybody have the answer? Does Avalon restrict on Saturdays? Does anybody know that answer? No restrictions in Avalon at all? And it's, okay, well, I mean, we can double check to make sure you're telling the truth. But I, I thought...
Oh, that's a good answer.
I didn't think, I know they did Sundays, I wasn't sure on Saturdays.
And in addition to the homeowners that you would solicit, not solicit, but reach out to, you should reach out to the real estate firms as well, because they hear this stuff constantly.
What do you...
Can I, can I say one last thing before, I know we're over time?
You got about another minute.
Personally, I know, or know of, most of the people that are here in this audience, in terms of contractors, I just want to say, we, we talked a little bit about respect, and, and I have to, I have to say this, because usually you hear complaints, that's what you hear. I have to, I have to say this, because usually you hear complaints, that's what you hear. But what we're not hearing right now is all the homeowners that I know that respect each and every one of these contractors that are in here, because they care, on what a great job they do, given the circumstances they're up against, meaning size of lot, timing of building, and getting jobs done to the professional manner that's demanded. So I just, I just feel like I need to say that, because we're throwing around the word "respect," and I think it's being used loosely, as if maybe perhaps there is not respect. In my opinion, and in my experience, knowing some of these people personally, and knowing of their reputations, it's the exact opposite. Most of these guys and girls out here will do, bend over backwards to accommodate neighbors, and take care of their needs, whatever they need, knock on my door, open-door policy, we're here to help you out in any way we can. So it's quite the opposite in my experience, so I think we have to be careful about, we have to respect, absolutely, but I think that is, that is the case in place right now.
Understood.
But they started.
One last guy, you're the last one.
I would just like to say, you're on the right track, okay? Having no work over the summer, like you say, is just going to push us further and further back. And then it's a mad race after Labor Day, permits are going, demolition is taking place, and these houses that are going up in Stone Harbor, these are not 1,200-foot ranchers that can be done in three months. So there's just no way possible that contractors have enough time to get these houses completed, without having the ability to do them in 12 months. And I do respect the vacationers coming down, paying all this money. Who wants to see that? I don't want to see it, but it's a fact of life, you know? So I do get it, I think you're, tread carefully, you're on the right path, all right? But there's got to be some respect. The ordinances need to be maintained, and I think if we maintain the ordinances that are already in existence, we don't have these problems in Avalon. I talked to Marty Palugi, I talked to the chief of police, it's the same issue there that is here. Homeowners don't want to see us. They're paying money, you know? So we've just got to try to balance it as nicely as we can.
Thank you, okay. Judy, one quick answer to the person that I got, that got up and asked about a sign on a property. The first ordinance that we read was a permit fee required, permit must be prominently displayed at the work site. So it's not a sign, but it is a permit that has to be on every property someplace.
Yeah, so no, that's the actual construction permit. What you're saying is have a sign that says Craig Otten built.
Has your name on it.
Yeah, but usually it's small, I don't think you can see it from, I think she wants a prominently displayed sign. Council has a public works report that was submitted by Grant about a week ago, I think we got them, everybody got theirs, because we are out of time. Utility report, utilities, things are within that public works report, with no other matters. One in the back? Oh, okay, I thought, okay, I thought he was coming up. Okay, with that then, can I have a motion to adjourn? Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. We'll take about a three-minute comfort break, and come back and start the council meeting.